Hi, everybody. It looks like Michelle's good, so. Hello, good evening. Thank you all for joining us. We're here this evening for a special meeting of the Beverly City Council. As councilors know, but members of the public may have been following or not, the meeting was initiated by four of our colleagues. Councillor St. Hilaire, Councillor Sweeney, Councillor Crowley, Councillor Rotundo submitted a letter just raising questions about if we could come together to have a discussion about some of the steps the city has taken to mitigate impact on residents with regard to Republic's strike. And so that's how the process began for us to be here tonight for this special meeting. As always, I'd like to just touch base on what's on our agenda before us. This agenda has just sort of two pieces to it. The first will be we will begin an open session. There'll be a chance for some conversation and discussion amongst councillors with regard to the strike, and then we will move to, if councillors vote to do so, to executive session, where we will be able to hear a bit more of an update about some litigation strategy. And we will not return to open session, so we will be adjourning from executive session. I will address that again for members of the public following us when we get to that point as well. So with that, I will officially call to order this special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Tuesday, July 22, 2025, 6:00 PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen. Crowley.
Here.
Feldman, Hausmann.
Here.
Rotundo, Spang.
Here.
St. Hilaire.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Councillor Spang, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councillor Spang, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I do just want to mention also that our city solicitor, Beth Oldmixon, is here with us this evening. Thank you very much, Solicitor Oldmixon, for being here with us. So as I mentioned, we're going to begin an open session for the purpose of having some discussion and conversation amongst councillors about steps the city has taken or questions that we might have about those steps with regard to mitigation of impact on residents of the Republic's strike. I do see the mayor coming down the hall, so maybe we'll give him a moment to come on in. He's getting water, yep. Because I think having him in the room will be helpful. We may have questions that he can help us address with regard to decisions or steps that the city has taken. Hello, Mayor. Welcome. Thanks for joining us. So we do have Mayor Mike Cahill here with us also. Thank you, Mayor. And Councillor St. Hilaire, I saw your hand. I did want to go to councillors who sort of got this process started first. And so, Councillor St. Hilaire, we'll go to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate everyone gathering here. It's been a few weeks since we've been together. And obviously, this strike from the Teamsters has been a major disruption in our community. I've, you know, been hearing from residents, I'm sure all of you have as well, over the last four weeks. And, you know, obviously, I think trash and recycling pickup is one of the most fundamental priorities of our city government. And I'm getting a lot of questions about, you know, look at what Peabody's doing, what Gloucester's doing, what Danvers is doing. And in thinking about our city's response, I thought it would be appropriate to have a public discussion around what are some of the things we've looked at and considered? What do we expect on a moving forward basis in terms of next week, the week after? You know, I think it would just be helpful to hear from the mayor. I think, you know, when residents call us, they don't necessarily know if it's our job or the mayor's job. They just expect their trash to get picked up. And so when I look at our job, I think it's to hold the mayor accountable and to ensure that we have information flowing to our residents and can answer their questions. Before we get into specific questions, though, I guess I had a question on the agenda. Just trying to understand what sort of topics are in bounds for a public discussion and maybe what might be more appropriate for the executive session. I don't know if Ms. Oldmixon could speak to that at all?
Solicitor Oldmixon, I don't know if you'd be willing to come up and just help us understand a little bit about some of that delineation.
Sure. This might be a little bit more of a you-know-it-when-you-sea-it, but there certainly can be an open discussion about the pickup that is happening now in the city. If it comes to any type of litigation issue, then that would be reserved for executive session. But I, to use a phrase that was just used earlier, I will pop up if there's an issue with respect to executive session.
Thank you, Solicitor.
And thank you. And through you, Madam President, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to invite the mayor to provide an update on kind of where he sees things at this moment regarding the situation?
I do think so. Mr. Mayor, if you're willing, I think it might make sense for you to be able to sort of give us, as Councillors and others said, a broad update of just sort of where things have been and where you see them going, rather than us sort of trying to take a guess at where we want to go. And then I think we could have a conversation with the mayor and with one another from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President and councillors. So an update first. I want to give some thank yous out. One is a thank you to the community. This is not any part of it been easy. And people have been incredibly supportive of, you know, of having to listen and adjust and, you know, plan and hang on to things longer and all of that. It's been a challenge. I want to thank the community. I want to thank our DPS. They've been fantastic. I want to thank our police department, our legal department, Solicitor's Office, engineering department. Don't want to miss, oh, gosh, my own office, Martha Lewis and Amelia Bovin. I want to thank Jason Foster from engineering. As you know, Jason has a job that's meant to be 50% recycling, education and enforcement, and 50% enforcement of things like privately owned stormwater systems that, you know, that are part of subdivisions or commercial industrial developments that feed into, in a lot of cases, into our city infrastructure. So he's got an essentially kind of education and enforcement position. And of necessity, he's been really full-time embedded with the Republic trucks for the last couple of weeks. And, you know, it's been a lot. And he's fantastic. He's great with people. He doesn't, he's got an incredible disposition and it's, and it's, it's been, we've been very fortunate that he's been right in the middle of that work. Commissioner Collins, I want to call out as well. He's always there and he and his team are making this all work. So when this all started, there were assurances made to all the communities involved that, one, Republic was working incredibly hard to come to labor agreement prior to the contract expiring. And two, if there was any kind of work stoppage, they kept reinforcing to us that they were a national presence and that they are, as I think we've found out, the second largest waste and recycling hauler in the nation. So they kept talking about how they would bring assets in from around the region and around the country. And while we might see a slight delay in the first few days of any job action, they would be up and running at full capacity within a week. And so we were looking to that and looking for that, and it became clear that they weren't doing that. We had to step up with other measures. This has been quiet. But our DPS team has really with a public health focus because it's not their job to pick up trash. And as I think you all understand and recognize, municipalities stopped being in the trash collection business 40 and 50 years ago in Beverly, like most communities followed suit. So we don't have the equipment anymore that we had when I was a kid growing up, when, you know, every community had their own trash trucks, their own fleet. So we don't have the capabilities of kind of en masse stepping in where our contracted hauler was falling short. But the DPS has been out in the community and they have picked up in some really important and targeted ways neighborhoods, some of the densest neighborhoods in the downtown. They've been handling some of our own school municipal buildings to make sure that those, you know, those don't get left behind. Even as we've been pushing Republic and at times having success in getting Republic to empty dumpsters, but at times we've seen our own need to get in there. And we've also helped out at our Housing Authority neighborhoods where that was falling down. And now that we've seen, and I would just ask anyone who has the capabilities in our community, if you brought recycling to the curb and you don't yet realize that Republic still isn't curbside picking it up and you see this, please bring it back in if you have the capability of doing so. What we know is that paper and cardboard spoils if it gets wet. Gets wet, gets moldy, and it's no longer considered recyclable and it becomes trash. And we also know that where people leave mounds of recycling at their curb, that is an invitation for public health challenges on its own. So we're trying to keep an eye on that and where there are any real potential for problems, we're trying to make sure that that doesn't stay at the curb. When this started, Republic tried to tell us that they couldn't pick up any trash until July 7. That was going back on the word that they'd made, that they'd committed to prior to the strike. And I said that that doesn't work for us and then found out that they were about to start picking up trash in three communities out of the 14 that were impacted. And I said, well, you can't, you can't just do that and pick winners and losers among your communities. You have to get in here and start. And they did. And they started with three trucks on trash. Now, in normal times, they have three trucks hauling trash and two trucks hauling recycling. They brought in three for trash right away. The drivers were from out of state. They didn't know our community. They didn't know the routes. It was, you know, it was fairly tough initially. By the second week, they got us two more drivers. They got five trucks going on a regular basis. Those five trucks were... It was rough, right? It was rough the first 10, 12 days of the strike. Those drivers were having a really hard time learning our streets, so that's when we put Jason out with them. And we started really kind of focusing on the routes they were taking and trying to show them and flag the streets and have have Jason and other staff kind of help them find places. So it's, there's been, as you know, they've never been up to date on the trash pickup. They've been a day behind. They've been two days behind. They've missed streets that we've had to get in a regular rotation of one of the five trucks going and getting what's been missed. And it's bearing fruit in that it's all started to become more streamlined and getting done better. But they still haven't shown any ability to start picking up recycling at the curb, which was, you know, when we said, you've got to come, you've got to come with dumpsters and help us do these drop-offs. So we've done two now recycling drop-off days, today being the second of them. And they've gone incredibly well. I just came from both sites before coming here and we've had the ability not to turn anybody away, partly because we were able to get enough dumpsters, big, long 30-yard dumpsters. Probably in large part because of that. We were able to, you know, see what was going wrong with recycling efforts and make sure that there's sufficient capacity. And our DPS and police teams have been fantastic at making those drop-offs work. So we'll keep doing that. We'll keep doing that. As soon as they can haul those dumpsters out and replace them with empty ones, we'll offer it again. And I think it's helping. What else do I want to share with you? We, as you know, we went to court as one of several things that we're doing because you have to, you have to try to make sure that when it was clear that they weren't going to commit to what they had promised and they were crying poor in terms of resources, we needed to remind them that they had been touting their their scale and their ability to deliver. And so we brought that case to their corporate leadership and they haven't delivered yet. And I don't know what will come of today's hearing in court, but we've made that ask of the Superior Court, the six of the communities involved. We don't know where they are with negotiations. They have been, they've been with a federal mediator, but they haven't been in every day. And I don't have any intel on where the strike is right now. I'm sure there's more, but why don't I stop there, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. Councillors, we've gotten a chance to hear a bit of an update from the mayor. And so I think if there's questions or discussions, it'd be a good time for that. Councillor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, before I get into my questions, I do want to recognize obviously, the city's been put in a tough position that's not of our own making. And the city alone doesn't have the ability to resolve the strike, but I do think, as Councillor St. Hilaire alluded to, there are measures that we can take that other communities around us have been taking to help ease the burden on residents while the strike is ongoing. And so that's where most of my questions are going to be focused tonight to see what additional efforts the city might be able to take, or if we can't, why we can't make any more additional efforts. And then ideally, this strike is resolved soon and this issue is put behind us. So I do want to start with questions about recycling collection. And just generally, I know that in reading what other communities are doing, it looks like Republic had collected recycling in Ipswich up until this week. Starting this week, they're collecting recycling in Peabody. And so I'm curious, Mayor, have you had any conversations with Republic specific to why they are selecting only some communities for recycling collection, but that they have not, other than these two drop-off days, made an effort to collect recycling in Beverly?
Thank you, councillor. So what we've found, we've been meeting as a group of 14 on a regular basis, every couple of days for the last three weeks. By 14, I mean the 14 communities who are impacted by the strike. And every community is different, obviously. Some of us have more commonalities than others. Ipswich on a regular basis, I don't want to get these numbers wrong, but they have one recycling truck and either one or two trash trucks on a regular basis, right, during normal times. I think it's one and one typically. And they've had two trucks in Ipswich for the last two and a half weeks. And they have been able to manage their residential routes and get some, not all, of their recycling. So we're New England, obviously, right? Our own community being 400 years old and having been settled along riverbanks and from the harbor fund up, there's no such thing as a grid street network where everything's simple and easy. And you give a map to somebody who doesn't know the neighborhood and they're going to be able to get to every house. So there are complexities to our community that probably common to Malden, for example, right? Marblehead to a certain extent, but not so much Ipswich. And so I think that's a part of why they've been able to do some recycling there. Peabody, they started recycling, I think it was today? Might have been yesterday, but they just started curbside yesterday. And I talked with Mayor Bettencourt last night about it and he said, yeah, they got to some places and people were very happy with that. They weren't able, they weren't able to cover the whole day of typical recycling pickup. So it's another thing they're going to navigate. And we've been asking the same. We've been asking daily since July 7, when are you going to start recycling? And the answer has been, we can't, we can't, we don't have the resources. Now, because in a couple of different places in the country, there have been, Republic has had strikes in a few different places. Some of the striking has been sympathy striking, right? But in other places, there's been work stoppages like this. And they've had a couple of other strikes settle. So they are in the process of redeploying some of their employees who've been working in those communities in other states to replace striking workers and moving them here. And they're claiming they're going to be able to start curbside recycling more holistically around the 14 communities by later or end of this week. That's what they claimed in our meeting with them yesterday. So we're continuing to push on that. I think that's, I think that's your answer.
Okay. It was specific to recycling, right, at curbside? Yes. And staying with recycling on the drop-off sites, you mentioned Republic is servicing them in terms of bringing the dumpster and taking the recycling once it's filled. Are our own DPS workers facilitating the site or is that managed by?
Oh, no, it's all us. It's all us. So, you know, for example, we're incurring costs that we will then subtract from our next payment to them at the end of this month.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. And the last thing, you mentioned you've been in contact with the other mayors and town managers of impacted communities. So two communities in particular, Danvers and Gloucester, I saw are holding more regular recycling drop-off events. Danvers in particular, I believe this week had rolled out a plan to have multiple events that are then corresponding to specific collection days. So if you're on Monday and Tuesday, then Tuesday is your day to go to the drop-off, which seems like a more efficient system and a way to help allow for some sort of regular recycling collection until Republic steps up and comes back to curbside collection. Do we know if Danvers is paying or orchestrating themselves the recycling collection as opposed to Republic facilitating it, or is Republic just giving Danvers more attention in their recycling drop-offs in a way that we can't get that same attention?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's the latter. I can ask, I can ask the town manager whether they're using their own resources financially. I don't think it's the latter, though. I will say this. We held the recycling drop-off last Friday. We were able to get five 30-yard dumpsters. And we got a commitment out of, I almost said national grid. Got a commitment out of Republic to haul away the five filled dumpsters on Saturday. Got that commitment on Friday. Didn't happen. They said, okay, Monday. Didn't happen. They hauled away the two at Park Street. So we had, we had two replacement 30-yard dumpsters at Park Street. The ones at Stanley were still there. So we talked about it yesterday and they said again, okay, we know your schedule and one for tomorrow. We'll get them, we'll get new empties in and haul out the old ones by early afternoon. And so this is the, this is one of the challenges, okay? The driver that was assigned to bring two new 30-yard dumpsters and haul away two filled ones got stuck in the line at the incinerator in Saugus for half the day. So by the time he got done there, he brought us one and his hours were done. So DPS was over there with their, with their front loader and they were, they were kind of compacting down the, both of the filled dumpsters that were there, creating smaller room. And then they brought the Packer truck, which has a 15,000-yard, I'm sorry, 15-yard, 15-yard compacted capacity, which is the way it was described to me is it's almost akin to a 30-yard dumpster because you're able to compact it very effectively with the hydraulics on the truck. So we went ahead with the drop-off this afternoon with one fully empty, with the Packer truck and with compacting down the ones that hadn't been taken out. It's gone well. We had long lines at the beginning at both events and that went for about an hour and a half and then it fell way off. And then it was just, you know, when I, when I left to come here about a half hour ago, they were down to only one car every four or five minutes. And so we thought we were going to be good to the end of the evening. So now it's about them getting those dumpsters out and new empty ones in. So they, they didn't do a very effective job between Friday and today. So we need them to do a better job so we can schedule a next one. I'd love to have another one before the weekend, but it's already now Tuesday evening. So we're just going to have to see how well they do at hauling those off and bringing new empties. And then, then we'll make an announcement.
Okay. And I just have one follow-up question on this line of questioning, Madam President. So thank you for that update, Mayor. I think it's safe to assume that when all is said and done, and I know we'll talk more about this in executive session, that some amount of payment that otherwise would have gone to Republic had they been servicing the city as normal will be withheld as a result of the strike, whether through liquidated damages or some other process. Is there any way that the city, and let me know if this is something you've considered, that the city could in anticipating of having in some amount of funding available, look to some outside third party that we could contract with on a temporary basis to run more regular recycling drop-off centers, given not only the issues we've had with Republic curbside, but now the challenges it sounds like we're having from the drop-off centers that they have been operating for us? I would think that the best way to ensure that we get good service and have some sort of stopgap measure for recycling is to look elsewhere outside of Republic. Is that something that you've considered? And if so, could you maybe elaborate on if that's an option still?
Yeah. So we, we have solicited at least five, I think maybe six different companies, everybody in the area. And we've had one response saying we won't cross those picket lines. We've had other, other companies that have said they can get us a bid back. But along with that response of, you know, we can bid, and what we've asked for is, you know, temporary stopgap, as you said, until the strike's resolved and they're back to, to full power. But we've been told that we'll get you a quote, but we can't come in without first training up more employees and getting our hands on more vehicles. Because, you know, look, these companies all, I shouldn't say all, I think, I think of Republic a little differently because they have such a massive presence all around the country. But, you know, these companies generally are investing in capital equipment and staffing up based on their own contracts and don't have trucks in reserve and don't have employees that they're not using on a regular basis. So that's what we've found in reaching out for near-term help. So as, as we've been asking and as we're going through that process, if anybody, you know, if anybody were to say, heck, I can help you, maybe not, maybe can't pick up the whole slack with something, but that hasn't happened.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Mayor. And any information we can get from Danvers about how they're facilitating a more regular recycling drop-off would be appreciated.
I'm not sure they are. I mean, I guess you're saying that they've announced and hopefully they're being able to deliver on what they've announced. Do you know how many days of recycling drop-off they've held this week? I mean, we're Monday, did they do it the last two days?
So I can pull it up on their website. I was just looking through it the other day. So they are... So this is their event schedule. They're running still centralized locations out of Danvers High School, Saturday to the 19th, Tuesday, the 22nd, and Thursday, the 24th. And the way they split it up was that Saturday date was residents with Friday and Monday collection, Tuesday, today's date, residents with Tuesday and Wednesday collection, and the Thursday event will be residents with Thursday and Friday collection. I understand and appreciate the response that the city has taken the initiative and some haulers won't even entertain working with the city. Others mention a long lean time and I certainly respect the logistical challenges there. If there is any way we can get to a similar situation to what Danvers has at least announced, that I think would be an improvement upon what Republic has offered us now with the better option just being Republic is able to find a way to resume recycling collection curbside.
Yeah. I mean, I'll call the town manager, you know, it could be that they're counting on the same thing we are. Is it Republic's going to turn around and bring in empty dumpsters on a schedule that they're, you know, that we're asking and they're saying they're going to try to meet? So I'll call over and talk with her. The, the other part of that you mentioned, you know, we, during COVID, we did some... Early on during COVID, if you remember, we asked people from different wards to go shopping at the supermarket on different days. You know, we could if we needed to with this, but from, from having run the two drop-offs at two separate sites in different parts of the city and the experience we've had at those two drop-offs, we haven't been inundated. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to see whether there's something that's being missed before we do another one, but I think so far it's working out. Certainly from the perspective of those who are able to, who are mobile and can get their recycling in a vehicle and to us, I haven't seen a need to do it differently based on what we've seen at those four sites over two days.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor. I saw Councillor Hausmann and then Councillor St. Hilaire, but Councillor Hausmann, if I may, just before you jump in, I just wanted to say, I think, just to sort of, I think, go along with what we're hearing about Republic making some promises and not being able to follow through. I have a good friend who lives in Ipswich and she was mentioning to me that they were getting some curbside recycling pickup, but not all neighborhoods. getting some curbside recycling pickup, but not all neighborhoods. And now they, Republic has just announced Ipswich no recycling pickup this week. So I, I just share that to say that I, I think there is this sort of tension with Republic where they're saying they can do something, and then I offer that for what it's worth.
And if I could, Madam President, hearing that, they probably decided they needed to take that truck and put it back on trash to get caught up, just a, just a guess. I mean, I would say this, the Republic teams that we've, that we're used to working with, their supervisory level, at the local level, who we've been working with for two-plus years, they're in there working massive hours and trying to get this done. They're not being resourced from their corporate in the way that we'd been promised. And that's really one of the, one of the bells we've been trying to sound. So, and, and as I said, now that some of the resources that were in other parts of the country are being promised to us, let's hope we all see that, that improvement over the next few business days as well in terms of staffing and resources.
Councillor Housman, and then we'll do Councillor St. Hilary after you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just a, a comment or two, and then a sort of a follow-up question to something Councillor Sweeney mentioned. I, I would also like to thank the, both the community for their patience and the city staff who are working to try to make this as, I wouldn't say painless as possible because it's painful, but to, to minimize the disruptions as much as possible. Their services are certainly appreciated. The question I was going to ask has really been covered in large part by the last question that Councillor Sweeney asked regarding, you know, trying to get other people, other entities to fill in the, the gap. I know the contract provides, the city can do that in the event the, the Republic doesn't fulfill its contractual obligations, which clearly it has not, and then charge the contractor for that or deduct from, from a payment. So, you know, I was really focused on what have we done in that regard, but it sounds like you're sort of, the administration is beating the bushes in terms of trying to find-
I can't hear you too well. Sorry. It's the-
Oh, sorry. It, it does sound like the, like you, an administration have tried to find substitute workers or folks from outside to do it. So I guess, given that answer and given that we know we're going to have a new trash contract coming up, this one expires in June, I think of next year, you know, it's important, the city, I think, has gone to court, tried to put leverage and pressure on Republic to both fulfill their obligations and, and deal with the strike in a serious way. But maybe for the next contract, our experience in this situation can be addressed somehow in the new contract, given lessons learned about sort of the, the lack of effectiveness of the, of the term in this contract about the city's ability to go out and, and get substitute help. Because right now, I, I imagine we could, imagine that this kind of situation would find its partner in some future contract situation that might be like this, so.
Yeah, and it's interesting that, you know, there, there have been some, there have been some various contractors and haulers who have been interested or willing to try to step in for some of the, some of our communities, and they've been very quickly notified by the union that, that would be seen as a hostile action to the union. So, you know, that's where some of, you know, some, some of the companies that could do work in our communities right now, they've been, that's been their response from the outset, not crossing the line. Others have, you know, have started to try to help a community and then pulled back. So this, as I said, Republic has promised many times, and they promised again yesterday, more resources by later this week. We're, we're looking, looking at that, we're pushing on whatever levers we have, and, you know, the, the job act in itself, the strike, the labor dispute, the only other thing is for that to be settled. And, you know, we don't, we don't hear much. We don't hear much. They, they've only had a couple sessions over the last week, face-to-face.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Housman, Councillor St. Hilary, and then we'll go to Councillor Bowen and then Spang.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, in, I guess last week Governor Moore Healy made comments calling for end to the strike, and in doing so, she raised public health concerns. So I'm just curious, has our Health Department been engaged? What, what can you say about the status of public health? I know we've probably all gotten calls about smells, and rodents, and raccoons, and flies, and maggots, and things of that nature that are all gross and nasty.
Things that come with rotting food.
Right, yeah. So as this continues, you know, what, what can you tell us about public health and that response?
Thank you, Councillor, for that question, mostly because I didn't thank our Health Department. They also have been working overtime on this. We have had the Health Staff over the last couple weeks, see, right away, one, one of the other things that we were told by the, the Republic leadership was, they were handling our, our commercial, their commercial customers in our community. And it became clear at about the one-week mark that they weren't. So we have really daily been pushing them. We had our Health Department create an inventory of privately contracted dumpsters that we could find in the city with Republic and start taking pictures of them. We've been submitting the names of those buildings and addresses, and, you know, as we've been able to determine names of management companies or condo associations or, or business owners, we've been submitting them on a regular basis to Republic. And it really is only in the last couple days that they have pulled any resources away from their municipal routes to start picking up the commercial, right? And so that's been, that's where, as much as anything, that's where the biggest health concern has come for me. Because we've, you know, we've seen, when, a lot of those commercial customers are pizza shops, coffee shops, restaurants, right? Or buildings, multi-use buildings that have residential and, you know, a food establishment. And so in those dumpsters, you're going to see a lot of food in those trash bags. So that's been one of the greatest concerns, and that's where the Health Department has been a big help. When we went to court, when we filed the other day and went today, each of the communities had a signed affidavit from their Public Health Director, looking at both the municipal waste and recycling, lack of, you know, lack of performance and how that's impacting public health, and also the commercial.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Bowen, and then Councillor Spang.
Thank you. So I want to add my thanks to the community members and city staff who are making the best of things and trying to make things work, and to the councillors who prompted this meeting so that we could just talk through and brainstorm. Only additional questions I have besides what's been covered are to talk a little bit about compost, which is unaffected because it is not a city contract, but it's been mentioned in some of the calls, which I appreciate. I know personally, when I had curbside compost, it dramatically reduced the amount of trash. So I wouldn't even put out trash every week, even when it was being collected regularly. And since I no longer have, no longer in a place that has curbside, I use the city downtown drop-offs that I can walk to, which walking with stinky compost is not the best, but it's better than holding on to it. So given the, the last set of questions, particularly about food waste, I'm wondering, even though compost in the city is a set of private contracts that homeowners sign up for or building owners sign up for, and that the city has a contract for some pickup sites, wondering if there's anything more we can do as people are just very, very conscious of their waste and their food waste, to help more businesses and residents get into the compost system quickly in the short run and, and stay with it that reduces our, our waste in the long term. But particularly for those drop-off sites, if there's a thought to expanding who has access to those, I think right now it's, you have to live in a certain area and sign up for it, but if there are ways to make composting more accessible during this kind of crisis period, and then in the long run, just to encourage it.
Thank you, Councillor.
Give me just one second. Sorry, thank you, Councillor. I think, I think what I'm hearing is an opportunity to maybe do a little bit of promotion for the, the curbside composting that's available to those who have a, have their own sidewalk or their own front door, right, on the street. So single-family, multifamily, you yourself are in a condo building, right, so it's a different dynamic. But, so yes, one thing that you mentioned was that we do have a couple of drop-off sites in the downtown for composting that people can sign up for, and they're, it's a fantastic program, and I, I appreciate that you use it as well. So, yes, why don't we? We can, we can do a little bit of promotion on the website with some social media. I could probably say something in, in one of my next calls to just let people know there is a way that we've talked about before and promoted before, but it's been a little bit of time, so, and everybody knows what we're talking about here, right? I mean, our, the ability to pay some, to get picked up weekly by Black Earth, and that way your food waste doesn't go into your, your own trash stream at home. We also, and I'm reminding us all this, there's an annual fee to do that, so we pay extra for the ability to have it picked up at our door outside of the city's trash and recycling program. We do also, however, offer a credit on the, on the trash fee of $20, I think it's $5 every quarter, right? $20 off the $100 trash fee, because when we piloted the program several years ago, the analysis of the, of the outcomes was that about 20% of people's, of the tonnage that came from their trash was being diverted as compost. So that's available for people, too. I will go ahead and, and put some things out over the next day or two, and I'll try to share them with you folks, and feel free to share whatever, whatever makes sense or amplify it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor. It's a great reminder. I've said to a few people, I can give you the information to how to get into that, seems like as good a time as any to begin composting. Councillor Spang.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the thanks as well for the community and city employees who've been doing a really great job throughout this difficult time. I did have some residents reach out to me who are unable to participate in the drop-off recycling. So I think what I heard you say earlier was that it, it rests on Republic to resume collecting recycling at the curb, but you're hoping that, hopefully by next week, from what they're saying, maybe end of this week, but hopefully next week that'll be back.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, let's just go day by day. You know, they're, they've made, they've made a start of it in Peabody over the last two days. They, they recognize that we're all asking for it. They have stated very plainly that they're, they're redeploying staff that have been working in other parts of the country to cover during a couple of other strikes. And if that comes to pass over the next few business days, you know, I'm going to keep asking daily for when can they start? And it, you know, it shouldn't start with a, with a given week, it should be whatever day they can start, right? Because it's, and, and look, these drop-offs have helped, and we know that with, you know, 13,000, over 13,200 customers in our municipal program, there's still a lot of recycling that's, you know, in people's, what, in their backyards, in their side yards, on their porches, in their sheds, in their breezeways, you know, wherever, and it still needs to be gotten. So, yeah.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Housman, I know you're waiting. I'm going to go to Councillor Carly, just because he hasn't gotten in here yet, and then Councillor Housman and Councillor St. Hilary.
Thank you.
Councillor Carly.
First, I'd like to extend my thanks for the job that we're doing right now. I know it hasn't been easy for the city, for the residents. A lot of Ward Three has had a lot of concerns and, and things going on there, so I, you know, I appreciate their presence, and I appreciate your helping out, Mayor, as far as that goes. So the concern that I have right now is having to do with, we have a lot of folks that are condensed, Gloucester Crossing, I have 90% of the housing in the ward, so a lot of people can't get some of that recycling to them. So I know we've done some things with some of the housing, we're able to pick up. Is there any option, if we don't think they're going to, let's say, get this going quick sooner than later, is there an opportunity for us maybe to look at putting dumpster, even if it's for a day, maybe in Gloucester Crossing, maybe down at the park, or even in one of the housing over by Story Ave, where it's, you know, a lot of people can't get there, and can't get to where we are now based on timing, and kids and daycare and all that type of stuff goes? I'm just wondering if there's, we could look at maybe a couple of the options to take care of these more-
You know, Councillor, what do you, you, it's a great, it's a great thought, and I agree with you. It's, it's really wards two and three that are the tightest neighborhoods, the most downtown, densest neighborhoods in the city, where people have the least ability to store, right? So let's, let's talk after this. As you're asking about getting a dumpster brought in, I'm thinking maybe we, yes, let's try that, and, and failing that, I think there's another way we might get at it, if it's, if it's not with a, you know, with a one size or another dumpster. If we do have to bring something in for a neighborhood, and I agree with you, Gloucester Crossing is the single densest neighborhood in the city, right? The most people living in the, the tightest space. We would need them to turn it around quickly. We don't want them to bring it in and have them sitting there for two or three days. So, okay. All right, no, that's a-
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make a note.
Thank you, Councillor.
Thanks.
Councillor Housman, and then Councillor St. Hilary. Councillor Sweeney.
Excuse me, is that better, Mary? Can you hear me better this time?
I'm just coming closer to the DC.
Okay. Well, first, I also want to thank my colleagues for calling for this special meeting, and I think it's helpful. You mentioned National Grid?
I know.
But that also reminded me of something.
TSD.
Well, as you know, Councillor Spang and I, and before Councillor, I'm sorry, Councillor Rand also have, have met, now, for me, now going on three years, dealing with National Grid. And one of the things the council did as part of that project was make sure there was a robust rodent collection, if you will, process, including a pilot program for what are called smart boxes, just a sort of proprietary box for catching, catching rodents. And given what's going on, I guess I have a couple of related questions. One is, what is the city inventory of those smart boxes? And has the Health Department worked with you on sort of special deployment in areas of greatest susceptibility to rodent activity, given what is, what is going on? And I, I guess sort of a shout-out to the idea that the city, I think, I would encourage the city to, to build up some kind of inventory like that, where there's an opportunity or where there's a necessity to deploy them when we have outbreaks, for whatever reason and whatever locations.
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great question. Thank you for asking it. I have tasked the Health Director with identifying some of the most concerning areas, and some of them are where some of these commercial dumpsters have been left to fill and overflow and fester. And so we've got, we've got our contractor going to be coming in and doing some additional setting of traps in some of those spaces where it wasn't problematic, but once you allow a food source and debris, which provides definitely a food source, and in some cases, you know, nearby harborage, once you get that formula, you know, I mean, let's be honest with ourselves, rats have been everywhere in this world for a long, long, long time. But when there's new food source and an opportunity for harborage, you're going to see them attracted, and they reproduce so quickly, then now you might have a problem right there. So we've been looking at some of these particularly problematic dumpsters, and we're going to be, you know, she's, she's got the, she's got the process underway to try to get some traps into those spaces additionally to what we're already doing.
Thank you for the answer, almost to a question I didn't ask, because I really want to focus in part on the city's inventory of smart boxes in particular, and you said, you know, the Health Department will be working with our vendor.
Yeah, we-
What, what kind of traps, and, and does the city in fact have, what I understand to be, its own inventory of these smart boxes which could be deployed?
So we no longer have smart boxes, the vendor wasn't doing a very good job. So we no longer have smart boxes, the vendor wasn't doing a very good job, according to the health department, and they contracted with a different vendor, who now, instead of, I don't, it's, this is Family Hour TV, be careful. Instead of electrocution as what the smart boxes do, this is a kind of a pinpoint, pinpoint to the brain, when, you know, when, when, when the, when the critter enters a trap...
But not a poison, I gather?
No, no, not a poison.
Yeah.
No, not a poison. Thank you for asking that. So we don't have a big inventory, but it's more getting the company we're contracted with to come out and do some more setting, and that's underway. And that's again, something that we'll withhold from our next payment, because, you know, it's Republic's failure to pick these dumpsters up that's created the dynamic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Housman. Councillor St. Hilary, would you be okay if I just asked one quick follow-up to that, and then we'll go to you? Thank you. Mayor, I think you sort of started down this path, councillor Housman, you did as well. A question I had written down was just, I understand that the contractor we're working with are using traps that do not employ rodenticide or poison.
Correct.
I wondered if there's a way, you were talking about an opportunity with the compost to be able to sort of help also educate or just in public education, with an increase in rodent populations, I expect that we might see in some private pockets, an increase in use of rodenticide, which creates its own sort of public problem. And so I wondered if there's an opportunity, or have you thought about with our messaging, just trying to help spread that message too, that rodenticide, it's sort of replacing a problem, one problem with another? I wondered if we could be part of a solution on that as well?
So that, kind of the caution against people on their own buying traps that use rodenticides?
If there's a way that we could help educate about, better about what we're doing, which might help people feel both empowered to consider other options for themselves, and also know that the city is taking steps in some of these public areas.
I'm going to, usually I take my own notes, but it's, the solicitor's the only one here who can for me, thank you. I'll talk with the health director in the morning about getting some messaging together on that.
Thank you.
I think it's a good, very good point, thanks.
Thank you. And thank you councillor St. Hilary for that leeway, so that I could just hop in. We'll go to you, and then councillor Sweeney.
Hey Van, two quick questions, if that's okay, Madam President?
Yes, please.
I guess the first, in light of your response to councillor Crowley's request for dumpsters in Ward Three, we would love to have two dumpsters in Ward Six, one in Centerville, and one in Beverly Farms as well. Our residents consider trash in recycling piling up to be a nuisance as well, and if we're going to do it in one neighborhood, I don't see why we wouldn't do it across the city, in all neighborhoods. And, you know, if funding is an issue, you know, we find money for things all the time. We just passed a budget with a large reserve unforeseen, we have safety valves built in, you know. So just to say, if we're doing one in one area, I don't, I don't think we should exclude other areas of the city, so that's just, I guess, a comment. And then I guess I had questions on the communications, the daily messages that are going out. There's been some comments about patience from our residents. I think I heard a lot of patience the first couple of weeks, I'm hearing a lot more frustration over the last week or so, and, you know, in thinking about the communications, you know, they're coming out late in the day, and, you know, people have lives, they got work, they got things going on all summer, they're on vacation, and a lot of times they're not able to react quickly enough to the message that's going out. And I think the nature of the pickup, it's sort of whack-a-mole at this point, and, you know, 20% was picked up on Monday, and 40% is picked up, you know, people don't know what, what is going on. And so I guess I would love to get just some understanding on why it's, you know, why we're going, you mentioned day-to-day at this point, you know, is there a way to project out a few days in advance? Is there a better way to, to give communications to residents in a way that gives them more time to react? Because I think that's what's leading to the frustration, they're getting a call late in the day, and if they don't, they don't run and get their phone in that minute, you know, they're missing the message, and even this recycling event, I know you messaged it last night for today, and that may not work for some people, right? They may not be able to react and make it a priority as quickly. So could you speak a little bit to communications plan, how these messages are getting developed, why it takes till late in the day to get a message out for tomorrow, and kind of why we can't give more of a projecting, a little bit more...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Some, some of the challenges are that we can't, we can't get from Republic a read on how much they accomplished that day, so we know whether we can go forward the next days. Each of the last two weeks, there was a day where I had to decide, we're not putting any new trash out tomorrow. It's happened each of the last two weeks. It put us two days behind until they were able to work Saturday and pull us back to one day behind, right? So that's why I've been hesitant to try to go multiple days, because if they have a bad day, right, if they have trouble in certain of our routes, the regular Wednesday route is big. It's geographically very large. It's Farms, Pride, Centerville, and kind of half of the densest part of downtown, a little bit here down to Gloucester Crossing. So some days are harder than others, for, given that they don't know the routes as well. There are things that have been delaying them as well from getting to Beverly, that involve their ability to get into the yards and get out of the yards with the trucks, because there's a lot of very active picketing that goes on. So sometimes, often, we don't know how many hours a truck is going to actually be in Beverly, and then if they got to go to, if a truck gets filled up and they've got to go to the incinerator, there is picketing at the incinerator. There are delays at every step that they go. So again, a couple of things, there was one day each of the last two weeks where we had to say no new trash tomorrow, because they haven't caught up enough, and they got, they got the stuff that was put up for, for today, plus things that are still backlogged from missed streets. That's one. As far, you know, I would love to make calls earlier in the day, but they're not coming clear to us until, you know, mid-afternoon is the earliest that trucks are done, some later in the afternoon. I think, as I said, generally, based on when they started picking up on that Thursday, July 3rd, they've been generally a day behind on trash pickup. I think, trying to think if there's anything else that you needed me to answer there?
Yeah, and I will, you know, I will also chime in on the thank yous. I mean, anything that's been missed, and I've texted, and you guys have been very responsive, and I appreciate that, I think everyone appreciates that, I think, but it's, it's the sort of, the state of chaos that it is, in the, in the ongoing state of chaos, and things starting to pile up, becoming a public health issue. Do you have any sense on how long this, this might continue, and are you thinking about...
You mean the strike?
Or, I don't know.
I mean, we're, we're still trying to find somebody to come in and help in the meantime. The strike is, what's today, the 22nd? It's 20, it's in its 22nd day? I mean, I've got, I've gotten a sense from hearing from the two sides, they each are kind of sending their pitch to us, so we can hear what they, and I've just tried to stay focused on our responsibility to do our very best to get the trash and the recycling, you know, safely up and out of our community, trying not to wade into their labor dispute. And I don't have an answer on that councillor, you know, we don't know when.
Yeah, and I, I guess I appreciate that situation, but I guess I would say, anything we can do to move from like a day-to-day chaotic situation to something more proactive and more planned, you know, I think would be very, very welcome.
Yeah, I mean, chaotic is a...
I don't know how we do that.
Chaotic is a descriptor word. I would say that we've done our very best to be orderly and predictable, you know, we've, we, I say we, I mean, in working with the Republic on the ground team, who do know the community, right? The workers they brought in don't, but they, you know, they're the guy, they're the men and women we've worked with throughout the last couple of years. They've generally been able to pick up trash a day after its regular pickup day, with a couple of slips the last two weeks. It's not going to get better than that this week. You know, I, I intend to make a call as soon as we're done here, based on what I haven't heard, I haven't heard any negative, negative reviews on today's pickup, so it's ready to go, I'm going to push go on it, telling, what's today, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
So tomorrow's regular Tuesday route will be what, you know, people are asked to put out before 7:00 AM for Wednesday pickup, so.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President, and I neglected to start before my questioning with praise and thanks for the city departments that have been responding, particularly public services, and then I know to compound on an already chaotic month, Sunday storm left very significant damage that public services, police and fire all responded to, on top of everything else that they're juggling. So I certainly appreciate all their efforts and want to make sure that that's clear. They really have done a good job of helping to mitigate two very difficult situations coinciding with each other. So the last thing I want to discuss briefly is the next contract, and I think this situation with Republic highlights how important it is that we negotiate a good contract for the city, so that ideally this type of situation doesn't happen again, but if it does, that we're not taking the brunt of the impact as a municipality. And so we are less than a year away from the expiration of our current contract, and I know that it's a long process, having done it personally in Boxford where I work, to negotiate a new contract. Where are we currently, and I'm sure that there is an all-hands-on-deck focus, but putting the immediate issue with the strike aside, have we mapped out a timeline once that's resolved, ideally sooner rather than later, of where we will go from here to make sure that we're putting ourselves in a situation where we're proactive in terms of negotiating a new contract, whether that's issuing an RFP, somehow or otherwise soliciting quotes?
So a couple of things. Oh, I'm sorry, you want to jump in?
Solicitor, I'll mix it. Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't sure if, so the contract, the contract that would be, I guess would be put out to RFP and for June of 2026 is not on this agenda. So I don't see that there's any notice from the open meeting law perspective to discuss an upcoming contract.
Okay, fair enough solicitor. I'll just leave the comment that I see that as an urgent item that we need to take action on sooner rather than later. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you councillor Sweeney, and I do think coming out of our budget process as well, that did seem like something that was at the forefront of all of our minds, and I know the mayors as well, so I know we'll have a chance to have some good, robust conversation about that in the future. Are there other comments, questions, or discussion for this open session from the council, particularly while we have the mayor here able to answer some of the questions that we've been posing? Okay. So I too will add, I will add my thanks. Thank you, Mayor, for coming and having some conversation with us. Hopefully, I think it's been helpful for us as councillors, I know we're interfacing, as councillor St. Hilary, you said, with constituents and residents quite a lot, and wanting to make sure that we have the best information. And I think helpful too, having you here, Mayor, for this conversation, for folks following on Bev camera who may watch later, hopefully it's, it's provided a good public context for this conversation, given that, as we've been saying here tonight, there's a lot of broad impact on the public when there's a work stoppage that comes with stopping picking up trash and recycling. So I'll add my thanks to our city staff, everybody who's been working hard to jump in and try to work on this, Mayor, you and your team, as you've been troubleshooting day-to-day, and my thanks to, as I mentioned, the four councillors who filed the letter to begin this process. I know councillor Rotundo has a Beverly 400-plus meeting that was already scheduled for tonight, so he wasn't able to be here, but councillor St. Hilary, councillor Sweeney, councillor Crowley, councillor Rotundo, thank you for helping us to open up this process. We do have the opportunity now, if it's so voted, to move into an executive session, and so I'm going to begin that process by just reading this introductory language, and then councillors, we will need to vote to enter into executive session, and Ms. Kent will be doing that vote by roll call. So I am looking for a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, so that we may discuss pending litigation in the matter of City of Beverly et al. v. 623 Landfill Inc., an indirect and wholly owned subsidiary of Republic Services Inc. et al., 2577 CV 00758. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to this litigation. As president of the council, I declare that an executive session is necessary, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the city's litigation position. The council, as I mentioned at the start of our time, if we do vote now to enter into executive session, we will be adjourning from executive session, the council will not reconvene in open session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Ms. Kent, will you please take the role for the roll call vote? Crowley?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Spang?
Yes.
St. Hilary?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
And flowers. Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Kent. So that is six, one, two, three, four, five, six. So six zero, that motion carries, so we will enter into executive session, and as I mentioned, this is a session that is not open to members of the public, we will not reconvene in open session. Thank you.